Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the Thursday, June 9, 2022, meeting in the Lake Forest Board of Education. Welcome everyone in the room as well as those online. If you would please join me with Pledge of Allegiance, followed by me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, once again, welcome everyone. Just a reminder that the meeting is being streamed live as well as being recorded. We begin tonight with the overall call of board members. This is McCloskey.
Here.
This is Starkey.
Here.
Mr. Thomas. Vice President Brown.
Here.
And President Earl Dempsey serving his chair as president as well. There's all five board members tonight. Thank you all for being here. We want a 2.4 people of agenda, Mr. Brown. I make a motion to approve the agenda as second. I motion the floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five. One, five, four minutes. I make a motion to approve the meeting. May 26th, meeting. Heather. Second. Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extension saying? Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. We're on to 2.6 recognition presentations will start this evening. Start over. Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore has got it.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. We're excited to share with you that we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize some individuals who participated in an aspiring leadership cohort that we put together here in the Lake Forest School District. So as a way to develop our aspiring leaders for the Lake Forest School District, we partnered with the Delaware Academy for School Leadership to provide an opportunity for these individuals to develop themselves into reflective leaders while supporting their efforts with preparing themselves for leadership opportunities. The cohort met eight times from February through May in two-hour sessions each meeting. The work began with having cohort members use Don Clifton's book, Discover Your Clifton's Strengths, to take an assessment and used a 30-minute assessment survey to measure strengths and weaknesses in 34 different criteria. This survey generated a unique report for each individual that outlined where their strengths were and what strategies they can use to apply those strengths. The cohort had homework assignments each session that aligned with specific topics discussed, which were discussed during our meetings, including being a strategic and visionary thinker, how the power of vulnerability can build relationships, how leaders can use coaching skills to communicate and develop those around them, how great leaders use communication to develop a keen external awareness, what the appropriate style and format of communication is appropriate in situations, and how to apply all of these skills as a school leader. Finally, in the last two sessions focused on self-marketing and preparing for interviews. These aspiring leaders heard from leadership specialists, including Dr. Tammy Croce, Dr. Kevin Fitzgerald, Dr. Anne Little, Mr. Chester Cox, and others on what to consider when building resumes and feedback during mock interviews. So we're thrilled to recognize these individuals tonight, and so not everyone can make it, but those of you that are here, when I call your name, if you come up front, accept your certificate, and congratulations from our school board. Greatly appreciated. Thad Frost. Jessica Leon. Dawn Braden. Katie Comich. Yeah. As a Green again. April Tabor. Robert Grant. Chris Sherman. Amy Slonaker. And Andrew. So we most certainly that all of you walked away from this session with some things learned and also able to apply some of those. And we look forward to potentially having you serve the Lake Forest School District as leaders in the not too distant future. Thank you all.
Characteristically, I have one this evening as well. This is our final board member, final board meeting for its school year, which also means unfortunately, I have the honor of recognizing Mr. Philip Thomas for this being his final meeting as a Lake Forest Board member. So we have a couple of things this evening. One, we do have a certificate or proclamation from the board, which I'll just read briefly. Whereas Philip Thomas has served with distinction on the Lake Forest Board of Education from July 1, 2017 to July 30, 2022. And whereas he has served in numerous roles, including alternate representative of the Lake School, I'm sorry, Delaware School Board Association Legislative Committee, representative on the Ecap Policy Council and as board liaison to Lake Forest North Elementary School and Delaware Early Childhood Center. And whereas he participated in the selection process of the district's current superintendent as well as numerous administrator interviews. And whereas he was instrumental in supportive of the rededication of the James Lee Blake Stadium and the naming of the Dennis A. Davis Aquatic Center. And whereas he has given freely of his time to attend various district and school functions, committee meetings, training programs, and other special events. And whereas he served with pride, commitment, dedication, and love for the Lake Forest School District and Lake Forest community. And whereas he's consistently provided excellent leadership to the students, staff, and community of the Lake Forest School District for the past five years. Now therefore be a result that on this ninth day of June, 2022, the members of the Lake Forest Board of Education recognize and thank Philip Thomas for his contributions to the Lake Forest School District, signed by all of your fellow members. And as well, we bring Mr. Thomas. Also have a plaque signifying his time with us and appreciation for outstanding dedication and commitment to the board, Lake Forest School District, staff, community, and students, 2017 to 2022. All board members get a picture together. So Philip, it's been an honor. Really appreciate all your time. We're going to miss you. And you're going to be busy. I will be busy. Five years, say goodbye quicks. Have a great time working with administration here, all the staff here. You guys have been great. Just a phone call away. If you guys need anything, always reach out. Thank you again, Mr. Thomas. And we are on to 2.7 citizens' participation opportunity for members of the public to address the board at each of our meetings. If you were doing so, we'd ask for you to sign up at the front table, present that to superintendent's office. Let's pick a little bit we have. Yes. All right. So none signed up this evening. We will open it back up at our next regularly scheduled poll meeting. With that, we are on to section three reports. Start with 3.1 financial reports. Mr. Kirk Kelly. Welcome.
All right. The first report this evening will be the May monthly board report. I won't spend too much time on this since we have a lot to cover this evening. As far as the revenue side of the report, really nothing significant to report other than on the local funds, you do see the other local revenue section down towards the bottom in the blue there. We're expecting, we're anticipating 137,000 still for this final portion of the, you know, this final month, the fiscal year. That's actually going to be at least probably 160,000 because we have that much that we collected from indirects, which has to be processed. So that, with that 80,000 of the other state revenue that's coming from our senior property tax, there's about 240,000 right there. It's being added from a discretionary revenue standpoint. Outside of that, the federal funds are now accurately reflected based on our final adjusted amounts from DOE. But other than that, our total of all funds receives 93% compared to 98% overall, and that's only because of formula salaries up in the top of the state portion. We have since received probably two and a half million of formula salaries since this report period. And there's probably going to be more added as is necessary to finish out from salaries for the year. So any questions on the revenue side of the report?
Questions for Mr. Kellman on revenue? So just want to be clear, if I heard you correctly, so our total, our discretionary funds, we, as of the end of June, we should see higher than what we had budgeted.
Correct. So the amount budgeted there is 13,105, and we should see higher than 13,105. Any other questions?
This is Kelly.
Moving on to the expense portion. Only things I'll highlight. Last meeting, I discussed the administrative services about halfway down the page. That was a negative 20,000, I believe, roughly last time. And so we have closed some purchase orders that, based on what we believe we need for the remainder of the fiscal year. And I think she just closed one other, or reduced one other one, so that'll free up another couple thousand. So that'll get a little bit closer to what we anticipated the budget will be for that portion of the discretionary funds. And then on to the Division III local salaries, you can see the budget remaining 827,000. As I've mentioned previously on financial position reports, we typically identify about 750 to 760,000 is typically our monthly payroll, the local monthly payroll. And so that should cover that, plus our Kelly services for the remainder. So I'm pretty confident we'll be okay there. And then moving down to our transportation. That's another hot area right now. And you can see that we only have $1,800 left out of a $290,000 budget. And so I just processed $30,000 for our final bus checks. That's 30,000 of local funds. So that's going to be added to that amount. And then we still have some more invoices coming in miscellaneous invoices for homeless transportation, our 10% match portion of that and some other transportation costs. So probably an additional 35,000 in transportation that will hit that line based on the increased transportation costs this year. And then finally down to the curriculum, we have 92,000 left according to this report, but we probably, I think, I don't know, the 30,000 to 40,000 range, we've already probably put another. Towards the end of the school years, when we start to pick up curriculum for the following year. And so there's a little bit more in the expenditure there than what's depicted here. So. And then moving on to page two. I'll just highlight that tuition because that's going to be brought up later in the meeting. Tuition is broken out for tuition salaries and tuition payments to special schools. And we put in there a budgeted amount of 2.2 billion. And you can see that we already have a budget remaining that's in a deficit situation when you combine the two. So our payments to special schools exceeded what we had in there for the budget, but our tuition salaries is coming in lower. We do still have, you know, the final two pay periods for tuition salaries for this final month in June. And we still do, I believe, most of our tuition payments though, that we have remaining will be coming out of what's encumbered there with the exception of maybe one. So that's where we see that tuition costs are coming in much higher than expected. So overall, 14% of the budget remaining compared to 18% last year. Any questions on the expenditure side?
Questions will miss report for expenses. Just one related to the administrative services. So we didn't change that budget number. The reduction in the deficit has just come from tightened up.
Yeah, so there's that encumbered column. So that's items that we had on purchase orders. And so if we had, for instance, $20,000 on a purchase order, and we knew we were only spending 5,000 for the rest of the fiscal year, then we'd reduce that by 15,000.
All right, great. Anything else? Great. Okay.
Do we want to move right into the pay proposal?
For the tax proposal?
Yes.
So, yeah, so let's, let's review. Yeah. Yeah, you've got several documents there. So whatever you want to, whatever you choose to go in this.
That's kind of correct. So I figured the first thing, I presented this to you once before, the FY22 Assessment and Tax Table for all of the school districts. That's a document that's on the DOE website. And it gives you an opportunity to see what the assessments are across all the school districts. And then also it's that top rate file there. There's that. So that breaks it out by county and by school district with the residential, non-residential, and total property assessments are on the first page. Then as you go down to the next page, then it goes by district, what our tax rates are. So these are the tax rates that were in effect for fiscal year 21, 22, this past tax year. And you can see all the way over to the far right, our total tax was $1.49, you know, 0.496%. So quite a bit lower than the surrounding district, all the districts in Kent County. And then it breaks it out by each component of the tax with the total valuation or the assessed valuation of real estate at 545 million. Now, what's nice about the next page down, this is basically converts that tax rate into what we would collect in taxes based on the assessed valuation and what we would collect in each of those separate tax categories. So the debt service, you can see we collected, we would theoretically collect 481,000, current expense 5.2 million, tuition 1.7 million, and match tax 827,000. And then total collections for the entire district based on that 1.494, 8.29, almost 8.3 across all the different categories. And so the next page down, the only thing I'll point out, and this might become a player for our property tax reassessment, is it does depict our assessed valuation at 545 million, but it also shows the full valuation of all property in the district at 2.8 trillion dollars. So.
Billion. 2.8 billion.
I'm sorry, 2.8 billion. Yep. And then the next page down depicts all the components of our tax, debt service, current expense, tuition, and match tax. It shows what it was the previous year, what it was in this most recent fiscal year, and then what the corresponding change was. And so one of the items that will become in focus when we talk about the tax rate proposal for next, for fiscal year '23, is that match or the tuition tax. And you can see that the tax rate change for Lake Forest was 10.58 cents per $100 assessed value. So that was significantly larger than any of the other districts with the exception of Seaford across the state. In fact, there were still a lot of districts that were still raising tuition tax last year, even though that was last year was when we saw that big drop in our tuition tax expenses. So and a lot of that was the virtual learning that we saw last year. So many of the expenses we incurred, you know, there was residential placement, or not necessarily residential, but the private placements, high roads. Any of our intensive learning centers, all those, they didn't have those, a lot of those transportation costs the previous fiscal year. But now you'll see those show up this year for tuition tax expenses. Those were the main items I wanted to highlight from this report that's on DOE's website. Was there any questions with anything else that you see in there?
If I have any questions on this, this document that has a wealth of information and numbers.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong. I mean, it's, it's, it's very, well, if you're a numbers person, it's very good to dig into. So you know, we'll move on to the next. Okay?
We'll go on to the next item, and that will be the bond payments because that will become part of our discussion. And you've mentioned about wanting to see this. We brought this up in a previous board meeting, but this was the appropriate time to bring it up this time when we just start discussing the proposed tax rates for the following fiscal year. So you can see, this is the schedule of all of our bond payments, principal and interest, and then total payment. So the final column is your total payment for the fiscal year. So you can see in 2022, this past fiscal year, the one we're in right now, our total bond payments were 466,431. And then you can see that it's dropping in FY23 to 385,000. So as we move down to the next page, this is all the various bonds that we have that were construction bonds for various capital projects that we have. And so that second block in the top left, that is the bond that was just recently retired. You can see the last payment was this past fiscal year. It's 70,523. And so that alone would drop our payment for this succeeding fiscal year by set that amount right there. But then we also have drops in interest payments as well. So it ends up decreasing our debt service payment overall by close to 80,000, I think. So the number there at the end for yearly total will not match up exactly. This is a file that was on my computer from a previous business manager, but so the numbers don't add up exactly, but it's pretty darn close. I don't know if it's because of the interest or what, but, but the previous document that you saw, that is the exact number for what we will be seeing for tax, debt tax service payments for 385,000. Any questions on our bond payments? Construction bonds.
Question on this document. So again, I appreciate you bringing this forward. This is something that we identified a year or two ago that was a good idea for, for the board to just have on an annual basis, an understanding of where, where we stood and what we had remaining for our debt pay. So this was a good time to bring this one up.
All right. And then we'll jump right into the tax proposal.
And, and before you do that, Mr. Kellman, if I, if I may, just for anyone in the room or anyone on the line, I always like to preface this discussion because I think it is a little known fact overall. I think when we hear about the school district adjusting rates and funding, we always hear the term referendum, where it's a public vote that will determine tax rates. And that is appropriate for a small subset of the actual tax rates to which the district has some, say, has some control over. There are actually five different components, four different components, four to total. There's a total of four. So they get, so there's a total of four different components, really only one of which gets changed by referendum. The other three, which are very specific buckets of money that go for very specific items. Every board in the state has the requirement of addressing each and every year. So we do typically get together, have this discussion in June or very, very early July so that those can assess what's going to be needed for the next year, vote on any of those adjustments, those within the county, and we'll go into impacting those annual county property taxes. So that is the purpose of this discussion this evening. So I will turn it over to you.
All right. One thing I've done this year also is as I provide a little bit more explanation, I run into a little bit more detail on those match taxes. But I will cover each component of the tax. And this is the document that eventually goes up on our website for anybody to see and then get a better, a better understanding of the different components of the tax. The biggest component of our tax is that current operating expense, and that is the one that is addressed through referendum vote. So we are fixed on that rate, and we've been fixed on that rate for several years. You can see there the last referendum for changing that operating expense tax rate was back. The vote was back in December of 2012, the last time the rate actually changed, I think, was around 2014. We'll see that later in the document. The next component is that debt service, of which we just discussed the bond payments. And so anytime we go out for any kind of capital improvement project, if it requires something where we're going to increase that debt service tax or we have to issue construction bonds, that's where we do need to go out for a referendum vote. We have had conversations in the past about our roofing requirements, our roofing replacement requirements of the district and using that Kent County Impact Fund. And using that fund, that would not necessarily require a referendum because we're not issuing any bonds. In other words, we're not incurring additional debt or to the school district. We're using our existing local funds to pay off those, those roof replacements in that event. So the last major capital referendum we had was back in 2014. And so all those bond payments you saw previously were from, some of those were from that capital improvement projects back from that time period of 2014 to 2018, 2019. I think the last item was completed probably around the 2020 timeframe. I think we did some final, the final item we did both was probably the paving down at the high school down by the, the baseball and softball fields. So that was the final item that was probably paid for out of those construction funds. Then we'll move on to the tuition tax, and that is again, a tax that the board has the discretion to set annually. I have added some examples of the schools that we pay these tuition taxes to. High Roads of Delaware, various intensive learning centers in other districts. We do pay our Delaware Early Childhood Center for the Early Choices Program, which is the pre-K for the intense and the special placements there. And then we also have students up at the Delaware School for the Deaf and then our residential schools as well. We do have an outside, out-of-state residential placement. One student. So, and those can get very costly. The Delaware School for the Deaf is another one that's, it's a very costly. We now have, I believe, three students up there. And the tuition rate per pupil for that school is $46,000, or at least that's the projected rate for this year. So that's a very expensive school. And that's a new one for us. We really haven't had much in terms of expenses for that school in the past. Then we move on down to the match tax with the various components of the match tax. And for this school district, the main component of that match tax is the minor capital improvement. We do have the ability to set that, but we have a ceiling as to what we can set that because it's based on the, the 60%, 40% split, 60% state, 40% local match. That's what you see there. The first $6 of state, the state provides. We, we can provide a matching $4. So in the past several years, we've been at about maybe 350,000, 360,000 from a state allocation. So that means that when you consider the total amount, that's the 60%. And then our 40% comes in, in the high 200,000s, mid to, or mid 200,000s. So. So when we talk about the state as a whole, allocates 15 million to all school districts for minor capital improvement. That 358,000, 368,000 is just our little slice of the pie of that 15 million. And so there's been many discussions these past couple of months at the Joint Finances Committee hearings to increase that amount drastically because there's deferred maintenance at many school districts across the state. There's been more of a focus to maintain the buildings we have instead of continuing to build new. And so Lake Forest is one of the districts that's done very well at that. And so Lake Forest is one of the districts that's done very well at that, maintaining the buildings we have. As evidenced by the fact that we have two buildings that are, you know, over 90 years of age. And probably the average age of the school buildings in this district is, is, you know, somewhere in the 50 plus years. So so there is a push right now that they are trying to add as much as $40 million to that 15, which would be a drastic improvement. But it would also be a drastic increase. And so in the event that that happens, you would see our state portion allocation go up significantly, but then we would have to provide the corresponding 40% match. So the problem with that is, as we'll talk a little bit later, is they probably, we probably won't see a, see a decision on that until the last few days of June, as they finalize the bond bill for the state, because the bond bill is one of the last bills that they usually finalize in terms of funding. So that's the minor capital improvement portion. As we move down to the technology tax, that was established back in FY 1999. But then they, they took away the state portion, so they do allow those districts to continue to collect that, but it's frozen in time. So it's basically frozen at, you know, 1.93 cents per assessed value. And it will never go up from here. The only way we can increase the allocation for the amount that we collect is based on the increase in assessments across the school district. So as we get, you know, more property assessments, higher property assessments, that's the only way that amount will increase. Then we move on down to the extra time program. That's the local matching fund to support, you know, before, after, and summer school programs. That's another one where there's a local match three for every seven of state funding, but now the, the state, again, when they created this, they had state funding, but they no longer have state funding for this, but they still authorize the school districts to collect their local match portion. So at the time that they canceled that in 2008, the state portion was 312,000. So we can collect up to 30% of that, but our actual collections are much, much lower than that. So the last two to three years, we have seen very little expenditures in the extra time programs. Some of that might be just because we have other funding sources available to us to provide for after-school tutoring and things like that. But we have seen years where we have witnessed 150,000, 160,000 expenses in that extra time program. But as of these past couple of years, it's been more down to 10 to 15,000. So it's been much lower. Then the fourth item for the match tax is the elementary school reading resource teachers. This was another program that was brought on over a decade ago, but then state funding eliminated it back in fiscal year 2010, but they still authorized the district to support the matching them. And so that was the we have four teachers in each of our K-5 schools that focus on, that are considered reading resource or reading specialist teachers. And we pay for a portion of those, and this is to cover the local portion of that. So since the state eliminated their portion of the funding back in fiscal year 2010, we use a Division One unit to cover the state portion now. We use this tax to cover the local portion, so that 30% portion of these reading specialists, just as it was authorized in the original bill, program backwards first introduced. And then the final component of the match is the opportunity grant, and that's the most recent one that we've seen. Again, that's another 30% match. I think because the intent is there to provide people, and typically the state provides 70% of the rate for personnel costs, and typically the schools are, are matching with that 30% amount. And so this was directed to enhance services for low-income and English learners, students. And we have used it in this district for the academic interventionists that we put in each of our schools, so six academic interventions across the district. So and so those are the five components of the match tax. Are there any questions with those?
Questions so far? This is what cost.
I just had a quick question. When we were talking about before the end of the match tax, we're going to push and tax and the change in that. And I know sometimes, you know, we, the students move because they have to. With us having three students at Delaware School for the Deaf, is that by choice? Is, is that the family's choice choosing for them to be there?
Uh, that I don't know. That is outside of my realm of knowledge in terms of those students.
Okay.
But I'm sure we could find that out.
Typically is not a this situation that is where needs and I think determine that is the level placement serves.
Okay, because my, my brother-in-law went to Delaware School for the Deaf. He was a late fourth student back in the seventies. But that was before these restrictive environment and all of that stuff. And then as I've known multiple kids that work, so I just was curious as to if it was
without knowing the situation.
Yeah.
The situation independently, typically that would be the situation.
Okay. I just, we can't do it.
And really, that's my understanding of all of our placements for tuition purposes outside of our district is, is that it's typically, we can't meet their
Well, that's why I was confused about that one, because I've just seen it both ways. So I, and you said we haven't really had many kids there. Pretty good to this. So all of a sudden, I just wondered if that was more of a just not being able to meet that.
Right.
According to the, the match tax and specifically the MCI, I, I think you, you turned it both ways, so I want to make sure I'm clear. So if the state's contributing 60%, we're contributing 40. We are allowed to tax up to that 40, or we are required to in order to pull the full state money.
Which way?
The state will not release their 60% until we can demonstrate that we've collected and have that 40%. That, that's what I, that's what I thought it was. Some of these other ones, though, we have the ability to, like the, for example, the, you said the extra time programs. We have the ability to collect up to that amount.
Correct.
And that can fluctuate, even if this year we didn't collect the full amount.
Correct.
Next year we could.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. So that, that extra time rate has been very low for the last few years, just because we haven't needed the funding. But for the, the, I did ask DOE also about your question with the the state portion of the MCI allocation. And I asked if, if we had, for instance, you take $100,000, if they're providing 60,000 of that for our 40,000. My question to them was, if we have our 40,000, can we ask for 60,000 of our state money, even though we have more there? And the answer was no, you will not get your 40% until you can demonstrate you got the full amount of your local 40% match. So that is where we are in the predicament of every November, December, we wait until after we hit that larger tax collection at the end of October. And at that point, now into November, we are now close to having that amount that's necessary for the 40% match, then we can go back out to DOE and say, can we please have our 60% now? So what you'll see in the MCI rate portion of this rate that I'm proposing is to increase that is, is so that we can start to push that date closer and closer towards the beginning of the fiscal year. Because that puts a strain on our ability to maintain the buildings. In previous years, we might have been able to keep a whole year's worth of MCI expenses in arrears and be spending off the prior year, and maybe wait until the, the end of the current year before we start spending our current year of MCI funds. But now that's changed. For instance, this past year, in November, December, we had already pretty much spent through our prior year MCI reserves or allocation. And we were anxiously awaiting that state portion so that we could start spending with our local and state portion combined. So ideally, we would like to push that, that date up closer to the beginning of the fiscal year where we can request that from DOE and have those, those funds available to us. Thank you. So as we go down at the bottom of the explanations for the different components of the tax, we do have the table that presents the not just FY22, the current year, but also the year prior to that, because we talked in previous meetings how the low tuition costs that we had last year. I looked at that, and I said that we could go ahead and reduce that rate, and that's why you see that that tuition tax rate went from .4189 down to .3131. Now that was a really drastic decrease. In hindsight, hindsight's 2020, I would not have done that. Especially seeing several other districts, you know, maybe the most that they were decreasing was maybe, you know, three, four, five cents versus you know, 10 cents on the $100 per assessed value. So as you see, the FY23 proposed rate, .4499, that is a rate that's higher than the FY21 rate. But I will say this, that the average between last year's and this year's proposed, this upcoming year's proposed rate is still lower than that .418. So now we will get into a little bit further, the tuition expenses, so you can see a, a history of where our tuition expenses are. And the reason why I'm proposing for that rate to go back up to the .4499. So we knew all along I was going to raise that rate again coming this year. It was kind of like a, a tax holiday for tuition this past year. But I knew that I was going to have to bring that rate back up for FY23. The debt service we've talked about, with that bond dropping off, I was able to lower that rate as much as I possibly could from 8.08 cents down to 4.96 cents. And then the match tax is going up slightly more than a penny. Most of that is due to the MCI rate. So any questions before we move on to the next section?
Just, just one question, a little asterisk down there, the capitation tax. From the wealth of information in this report, appears not all districts have that in place, is that correct? We appear to be one of half dozen or more. I found that interesting, unique.
Yeah, and that's something that potentially we could address maybe the next referendum. I mean, if that's ever a case where you want to address that capitation tax, and you know, there's, there's situations in the past where they've been traded you know, that capitation tax for an increase in the current expense tax. So it just depends on how districts want to attack that. I think many districts probably once had a capitation, maybe they, they used it as a bargaining chip at one point. And gave it up for, you know, to, for additional current expense taxes. Any other questions before we move on to explanation of things?
So on the explanation of the changes, I have already covered most of these, the debt service I've covered in terms of our, our drop in, in bond payments, as we saw with the the sheet on the construction bonds. The MCI match rate, I, I do have going up about 5.2 cents. And what I will say is, is that's to account for 120% of the collection of what I think we will need. Many districts will collect at 110%, and that's to account for delinquencies and tax payments. But the reason I'm requesting 120% collection is because we want to try to build up that, that cash amount so that we can request these funds earlier in the fiscal year. I don't know how many districts are in the same boat we are in terms of having to wait almost halfway into the fiscal year to act to request our MCI funds. So, but I do know that many have sufficient cash on hand to request it pretty much at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Can you only request it once?
No, no. So you mean, we could, we could request as of 10, one, whatever has been collected at that point. And then circle back later in March and request the rest once more has been collected?
Well, once we set these tax rates, they're fixed for the fiscal year.
Yeah, but I guess what I mean is, so that 60% that we're saying the, the, the budget, the, the 60% from the state, where does that total number come from? Isn't that set from a budgetary?
Yeah, that's fixed up from the, the bond bill.
So based on that budgetary number, we know what our 40% number is.
Correct.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, do we have to request that 40% all at once? Or can we say as of November 1st, because you're saying in order for us to request, we have to have collected physically.
Correct.
Right. So as of November 1, if we have delinquent payments or whatever else we haven't collected our full amount, are we able to go and request the match of what we have collected though so far?
No.
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 So you do have to go and request it all at once.
Correct.
All right.
And that's the predicament we're in. You have to wait until that large tax.
Because if it's, if, if we do have a, a rough year and things aren't delinquent, it could be several months before we have enough to go.
The other thing I will point out is by doing 120% of the collection rate, what that's basically doing is, is building up our, our local MCI cash reserves such that at the beginning of the fiscal year, we can move that date closer to July 1st in terms of when we request the funds from the state. It also has a second purpose, though, and that is, is it provides us flexibility in that when we typically, this district sets these tax rates in June. And so when we're facing the state changing allocations to our MCI amount on the last day or the second to last day of June, whatever they change, we're at the mercy of, of whatever that is. And so hopefully, we've set our tax rate correct. But if, for instance, we set this tax rate today based on 100% of the 100% collection rate, based on the 40% match, and then they come back and say that they're going to give us twice what we originally expected, well, we've already set our tax rates with the county, and now we will never get to that point to get to our 40% match. So what hopefully this does is, as we build up some reserves, now it gives us some flexibility that we don't have to come back for an emergency board meeting, or we can utilize the reserves we have on hand to potentially absorb any kind of state increases when they do make any increases to the, the NCI allocations.
But this year, we are potentially being asked to vote on this tonight.
Correct.
Without knowing what the final state number is going to be.
Correct.
So we could potentially, whatever we vote on tonight, we could potentially be needing to readdress if
Absolutely.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
They do give us a whole lot more.
Yeah. So the plan right now is, is if the state does provide more MCI funding, then we will, at your board restructuring meeting in July, that first one in July, we still have an opportunity to change this tax rate then, should they allocate more funds. The other portions, the opportunity fund allocation is based on our flex funding, and that's the one where we do, they do authorize, authorize us the 30% collection. So even though the opportunity fund allocation from the state is going down a little bit, I have bumped up the tax a little bit because we actually also use a little bit of our cash reserve from the opportunity fund that we collect each year. And so we are using less cash from that opportunity fund, meaning that we have to collect a higher tax rate to accommodate the, the total cost for those six academic interventions. And then finally, the reading resource teachers. That local portion increases pretty much every year. Anytime you have the state increase their pay, or we increase our local pay scales, that increases our local portion for those four reading specialists. And so this increase to the resource teachers is to accommodate the local salary portion of those. And then finally, the last component that's changing is that extra time match, and it's just going to go down very small now. Probably a tenth or a hundredth of a penny hardly detectable. So and then finally, the tuition tax, which is the big one, that's the large increase, and you can see that that's going up substantially. When you compare it to the previous year, you're talking about an increase of, you know, 14 cents. But again, compared to the year prior to the, the major impact from the pandemic, it was 42 cents almost per assessed. It was forty-two cents almost per assessed value, so now we're looking at almost forty-five cents per assessed value. But again, the average between the two, between FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, even with this increased rate, will still be thirty-eight cents per assessed. For a hundred dollars of assessed value. And so you can see what's going on with the tuition tax expenses there over the, the last several years. With last year being that anomaly, that one point six six million dollars in expenditures for our tuition. And a lot of that was driven due to the, you know, virtual learning and. Lower cost to the other school districts, lower cost for our private placements across the board. And so then you see that fiscal year twenty-two, what I presented there is a projection, is an estimate two point three five billion, we are already. To this day at two point three million, so. I'm hoping that we don't see more than another fifty thousand. In expenses for tuition taxes, because we only have a couple more weeks to process expenditures for that, so. But there's a lot of things that have been driving that, that cost up to the two point three million that we've seen so far. Our in-state payments are up quite a bit, and those are to the other districts, so that's up over four hundred thousand. Just to, for our ILC placements in, in other school districts to include like Charlton and so forth. And that includes also the Delaware School for the Deaf. Our private placements are up seventy thousand. Another big portion is our one-to-one pairs, and so a lot of IEPs were written with one-to-one pairs put in them. And so at the beginning of this fiscal year. We did not hire a lot of. Pair professionals to satisfy that one-to-one requirement, what we chose to do is go the contractual route. And because the idea is, is that as, as they progress, hopefully we can pull them off of that one-to-one requirement. For that one-to-one pair, so there's, there's a plan to kind of. Migrate away from the requirement for, for a one-to-one pair. But midway into this past fiscal year, you know, we had lots of issues with the pandemic as well, where. You know, with all the people that were out for emergency leave, whether it was for, you know, COVID or testing positive or just for quarantine. I think that threw a huge wrench in a lot of the plans to try to get a lot of these kids to migrate off of that requirement for a one-to-one pair. So a lot of the increased expenses were for those contractual one-to-one pairs, but we still plan to. Use that as a tool right now in the one-to-one pair requirement. So that we can pull that off as needed, it's a lot easier to pull that expense away in future years than it is if you were to hire a district employee for that. So, and then finally, our legal services are costs are also up for tuition costs. Are there any questions for the? Any of those tax changes or the tuition expense, Mr. Rapp?
So first question, on the. The match portion allocated to the MCI. We didn't see that we're gonna collect a projection to collect a hundred and twenty percent to have the reserve. So then going forward, would you anticipate the following year backing that down, or would you anticipate yearly collecting a hundred and twenty percent?
No, I, I don't think it would be yearly a hundred and twenty percent, I think initially, I would see where that gets us. So just to give you a little insight into that debt service tax, or I'm sorry, we're talking MCI taxes. Yeah, I think as we get closer and closer to being able to request that earlier in the fiscal year, I would back off of that, absolutely.
That's definitely when you mentioned that most other places are doing one ten. Yeah, I would hope that as well. One other question I have with the, obviously you mentioned that with the match tax, excuse me, the. Tuition tax, we obviously didn't collect enough this year because of the rate. When we overspend on items that come from that bucket, where does that money come from? What money do we use to cover this?
Well, and that's one of the reasons you see that I put down there the need to collect two point five million, and so. Benchmark for a lot of business managers is somewhere from between three to six months of, of tuition expenses that they like to have in terms of cash on hand when they roll over the fiscal. And so last fiscal year, when we rolled over the fiscal year, I had, we had closer to six months of expenses. So that's why I chose to reduce that tuition tax rate. Now, this year, we're on pace to, to roll over probably somewhere between two to three months of. Worth of annual expenses, so that's another issue that I'm trying to collect for. But the, the other issue is, is we see how much transportation affected our costs for tuition when it dropped down to one point six six million. And we know what's going on with transportation right now locally with the cost of fuel, so. In the event that this two point five million is not enough, and we end up eating into that reserve. If we completely drain our tuition tax fund, our dollars, then that has to start coming from our local funds. So that would start coming out of our local balance.
But, but to build off that, at this, at this point, we've overspent it for the year, but we overspent into a cushion within the tuition.
Correct.
Bucket that we had.
Okay, correct.
So we did not have to dip into the local funds yet.
Correct. The other good thing is, is that those, a lot of those tuition expenses hit later in the year, the largest of them, so after our tuition tax collection.
Any other questions at this point of the report?
The only thing I'll bring up is, is as we move further down, I, I just have a table there that shows the history of the tax rates. And then we can see what, what happened with the, the new number for the assessed valuation of real estate. That's a number as of May thirty-first from Kent County, so five hundred and fifty-five million. And then as we move on to the last page, we can see what's surrounding, this is, this was in that previous document for off the DOE website, but this is just a little bit. More magnified look at just the Kent County districts and what the tax rates are for each of the districts. And what ours is gonna go up to, and of course, we don't know what the other districts will be going to. We're not privy to it, they're probably gonna be setting that later this month or even in July, so. And then the last item down at the bottom. In the past, I've always presented the average assessment and what this would mean to the average taxpayer. I've added a block of the average residential assessment, because the average assessment takes into account commercial assessments as well. And then I've also presented the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, not just the twenty twenty-two chart. Since we had that down year for the tax last year. So you can see with the, with the one point six one two two rate, that the average residential assessment. Would generate a tax of four hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that's compared to four hundred and thirty-two last year and four hundred and fifty-seven the previous year. So it is an increase of about thirty-three dollars annually for the average residential assessment from the previous fiscal year. But it's only an increase of about nine dollars, eight to nine dollars from the, the tax assessment of this fiscal year twenty-one. That is the last document for the tax. Okay, so. This item is up. We're at this point when the agenda for a vote towards the end of the meeting, so this definitely while we're, while it's fresh with the opportunity for. Any further questions, any discussion, anything, anything anyone wants clarity on?
Mr. Kalman, there's some current legislation. That could cost the district a significant amount of revenue, and I'm speaking specifically about. Structures related to forestry and agriculture being pulled off the table for taxation purposes. If that, if that were to happen, what would be this body's course of action? Because that would, I think the estimate was that could cost us about three or four thousand dollars in tax revenue.
Correct, yeah, so we did get the number three hundred and fifty thousand from Kent County in terms of what this bill, the fiscal note for the school district would be. The fiscal note that's actually attached to this bill says that it's indeterminable right now. But right now, it would exempt. All ag and farm land basically structured, so that would be, you know, chicken coop silos, barns, things of that nature. And so that's what's generated, we would be the, the most heavily impacted in Kent County from this bill. I mean, I understand to some degree why they're proposing this bill. But it does have a heavy toll on this district, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, some of the conversations that. From my knowledge that have happened in committee on this is that they will try to attack this either through that ten percent. Clause that they talk about, the, the districts would be having the flexibility to go ten percent above what's necessary. I don't know if that means that the current expense tax that we would not have to go to referendum to increase that by ten percent. Or the other, the other proposal I've seen is where they would address this through the reassessment that's going on right now across all three counts. So if they do it that way, they would factor all of this into that full reassessment such that. It would be a net neutral collection across the board for the entire school district, so that's one of the proposals as well. Is that they will try to address it through the reassessment.
Now, this is, this is still in committee, to your knowledge, is that where this bill resides?
Uh, I believe it may have been released from committee.
Okay.
So, and.
The way. If you know, the way the bill is written, certainly would, you know, if it passed, uh, at the end of, by the end of this legislative session. Would take effect beginning with this upcoming tax year.
So I was kind of wondering that myself, and I would find it very hard to believe that they would be able to, to have that take effect immediately. Like that would crush a lot of school districts, and you, you have to give this school district time to prepare for this. So that's why I think that they would probably have to push that off, I don't see how they could possibly assess that immediately for the, the upcoming fiscal year. There's gotta be some sort of mechanism that we can. Whether the state allocates more money to make up for that lost confidence of revenue stream. Kind of like the senior property tax credits or. Through that reassessment process. If my math is correct. Write down one of the pages. So what, what is being proposed to us year over year will be approximately seven point seven three percent increase. However, if you were to compare the projection or the, the request to two years ago. It ends up being a net increase of one point eight two percent. Are the other questions on this topic at this juncture?
This round, so with the, the other, the last page, you've got the slide where as. Let's compare the other Kent County schools, and then obviously there's NAs who were twenty-two, twenty-three because they had that voter on theirs. Have you had any conversations with your colleagues in other districts to see where they feel like they're gonna end up?
It's hard to say, because typically, the current expenses are fixed across all the districts unless they have through referendum votes. So those components of that tax will not change for the most part, unless they've already been voted on to change. For instance, I know when Caesaron yet, the referendum vote to, for a lot of the construction they have to that new school. I don't know if they pushed through an operating expense referendum as well. But sometimes those are phased in over, you know, two, three, four years, and so I don't know if there's any changes in those. With the school districts that are experiencing, you know, some construction. Their debt service might be, you know, a lot higher, but I, I don't imagine that those rates will drastically change from what we see there.
I mean, tip of my point is, it would be nice to see them all go up so that we could say we're not.
Yeah. And we've typically been in that one point five range. As you can see from, I think it was the second or third page of it. It was the second to last. It shows the tax rate history. So yeah, two years ago, we were at one point five eight, one point five eight, one point five six, so this would be our second highest tax rate. Correct.
Yeah, so even with the, even with this increase, we're still the lowest.
Projected to be, which I, I can't imagine, I can't imagine that everyone's, it's not also going to go up, given current state affairs, various things.
But most of them did go down, right, last year, so most of them did make any. Choice, you just said you wouldn't have probably gone out quite as far, but most of them did choose to go down last.
Some of them did lower that tuition tax.
Yeah.
Some actually increased it, but some did lower that tuition tax.
So they lowered it and still are that much above us, and then.
Yeah. Milford's the only.
Well, Milford was the only one that lowered it.
And they, they lowered it a very small amount.
Caesarani, Capital and Smyrna all increased their tuition tax last year.
Overall, Milford was the only one that reduced slightly, everyone else was up some dramatically.
So only six districts last year lowered their tuition tax.
All right, uh. Anything else, of course, at this point, Mr. Kalman? Anything else for Mr. Kalman at this point? All right, thank you, Kirk, we move on to three point two superintendent report, Dr. Luke.
Good evening, everybody, thank you, Mr. Kalman. On that thorough report, good evening again, congratulations to all our students and staff, I'm finishing here strong. I'd like to specifically recognize the high school team for fantastic graduation, Principal Mrs. Dupris, Assistant Principal Mr. Reichenberg, and Stilley. Dean of Students, Mr. Morris, class sponsors, Miss Cursey and Mr. Brown, just a few of the many people who made it possible. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Starr and Mr. Malone and the entire custodial team. They do everything from setup to tier down to directing traffic and security, and. Those guys are the first ones there and the last ones to leave it, amazing job, putting on the vent of that size is not easy. So congratulations, you know, that they make it look easy. Let's see, I also want to thank all the other school teams that put on, you know, graduations, award ceremonies, recognitions, band concerts. We, we had a great spring season with a lot of great events, and thank you to everybody who invested in that and did a great job recognizing our staff and students. Now that years all return, our attention reflecting and reviewing on the year planning on next year to make it our best year ever here in Lake Forest. Speaking of the end of the year, there's one more thing left, and that is report cards. If your child has not received a report card yet, it will be available at the home access center here in the next week or so. But if you do need a paper copy, reach out to your school, and we'll see if we can get it taken care of. I don't have any report on our back to school update, fortunately, other than to say we fully intend to be in school next year, face to face every day. So please stay healthy before this thing fall, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas, any questions, discussion for Dr. Lucas? If you get served, we'll go to three point three, House Bill one ninety-eight, this Alexander and Mr. D.
Sliding up here. I'm just wanted to give the board, the public a quick overview of House Bill one ninety-eight and its implementation, the plan for implementation within the district. What it is, what it isn't, and our timeline for implementation, so. I want to get the two ladies next to me, Mrs. Alexander and Mrs. Bradley, a huge shout out, they're the ones. That have their boots on the ground, getting the setup at district level, getting this ready for implementation just today. They did a professional development with every staff member within the district, explaining what this bill is, what it isn't. And Lake Forest plans for implementation, so without further ado, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Alexander.
All right. All right, so the bill, just to give you a little background on the bill, then I'll go right to the timeline. The bill was created for students and stakeholders across the state. It was sponsored by several state representatives, and if you didn't know, the House Bill number one ninety-eight is actually derived from the year. That the first African-American sorority was established on Howard University's campus in nineteen eighty. A large proponent of this bill, Student Voice, a lot of students up and down the state have shared that. They felt a need to feel more connected to the curriculums, and it was, that was the catalyst for the bill. It's also our extension where. It's also our essential, our equity focus and our strategic plan. And Delaware is currently the only state right now in the nation that has put this into place. So for the timeline of the bill, um, in March of twenty twenty-one, it was introduced and signed to the education committee in the house. And then in April, it was passed by the house. And then in April, assigned to the education committee, it said it passed by this in May and signed by the governor. So for the year of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the students must identify a court, a point person to oversee implementation of this curriculum. And I am that thy person. And but it's not just one person, it's the entire district, students, staff. It's everybody's, it's going to be involvement and commitment to this curriculum. We had to conduct audits of our current curriculum to determine what areas, House Bill one ninety-eight already had. And what resources we need to provide to supplement or to. The requirements in the bill. We also. We have to provide professional development on House Bill one ninety, one ninety continuous. And then for our twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're going to begin the implementation of Black History Curriculum, Monitor's Integration. And initiate the cycle in really to full integration. And when we get to the end of the timeline, I'll specifically go into what that looks like. So just to talk about what House Bill one ninety, it, one ninety is. It's not. House Bill one eighty is the study of Black History, serving to educate students about how Black persons were treated throughout history. And the study of Black history is intended to do all the following. Examine ramification of prejudice, racism, tolerance, prepare students to be responsible citizens. And a holistic democracy reaffirm the commitment of free people to their commitment to the United States. What it is not, the study of Black History is written in the House Bill, is not intended to do or be any of the following. It's not to teach or implement critical race theory. It's not to change or alter Delaware social studies standards. And it's not to rewrite or replace the United States history.
Could you say letter A again? Just so everyone.
It is not to teach or implement critical race theory. The bill does provide us with the opportunity for students to see themselves within the curriculum. So they call have a coined phrase called like. Mirrors, mirrors, mirrors and windows. So if it's a mirror, you're being able to see, receive yourself within the curriculum. And if you're in a window, you have perspective to other perspectives. So that's the purpose of the bill. To provide experience into others. So our next one, and I, I love a picture and a visual. So this tree basically is where the House Bill is going to start. The start in the trunk, which is in social studies, go lead out into other areas, E L A, exploratory, math, science, A C T. On the right-handed side of that visual shows you all of the curriculum. The, all of the Black History curriculum components. Well, let me just give you disclaimer. A lot of these, we have to make sure they're age and developmentally appropriate. So if you look at some that talks about racism, slavery, some of this is definitely not going to be teaching within kindergarten curriculum. Well, the ones that are perfect elementary, like your black figures in national history, Delaware history. I've learned so much just by looking at materials and going through. What we currently have in this state of Delaware. We conducted an audit of our curriculum, identified the areas where we need additional resources. The state is not providing additional funding for this House Bill. However, what they're doing is they're working with University of Delaware, Dell State and other coalitions to provide us with resources. So they're working on lessons and certain redeveloping. So what Lake Forest School District has completed so far is we've attended statewide meetings regarding House Bill one ninety. The CIA team as well as myself and Mr. Dick. We have met with staff regarding House Bill one ninety. We had a professional development today, but we've met in P L Cs and other parts in schools. We've conducted the audit of our current curriculums, researching, sharing additional resources. And that is going to be a growing list of resources. And then of course presenting to board of all. So the last piece that I have is the integration timeline. So we started, and this is for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, if you look up. We've already started the orientation to House Bill one ninety, like we told the staff today that we're just the Americans in it. Right now, of what we presented today. There will be with all of these years of the continuous professional development. Next year's professional development from the state, their focus is on cultural responsive education. Or cultural response teaching, what basically is providing all students with the perspective of others. So, and it coincides really nicely with the House Bill. Our emphasis on our existing units that we currently have and looking at what we need to put in place. We're developing a K to three curriculum. Like I said before, the state is working with U D and Dell State. To come up with this K to three lessons because they don't have a lot of these pieces within the current social studies curriculums. They're still developing those lessons. And also providing K to twelve related arts with resources regarding House Bill. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four, of course, continue our professional development, K to three integration. And develop that four or five curriculum, again, continue the K to twelve related arts integration. And then in twenty-five, twenty-six, continue professional development, the K to five integration, develop six to eight curriculum, continue K to twelve related arts. And then. And the next one, continue professional development, K to eight, twelve, nine, twelve, thirteen, continue K to twelve related arts integration. And then lastly, again, continue professional development and then K to twelve with integration. And each year we have to submit an audit regarding where we are in our timeline to the state.
Questions or discussion, Mr. McCloskey?
So is this a curriculum within the curriculum because we have, we have the curriculum? And then this is, but when I hear you say that they're going to come up with lessons. How are the lessons going to integrate within the curriculum that we already have? And how much, what's the percentage of on top of the curriculum? Is there, these are probably still all questions we don't have answers to, correct?
That is correct.
Because I'm, I'm thinking here, thinking like, well, it's not a whole curriculum because this is something we're integrated in. But yet then if you're, if the state's developing the lessons and you're putting them in the curriculum, it seems like a lot.
The states developing lessons, they won't be mandated upon the districts, so we'll be resources. So we'll be able to bet them out internally to see if we want to use those. But what they're attempting to do is take the current social study standards and integrate this in with them. So it wouldn't be palan necessary more on top, but it'd be integrated into new lessons.
Because you would say that we, there is a portion of this that naturally we're doing it.
Very much. And we have documents that we built internally and these ladies have put a lot of work into it where they met with grade level chairs. Department chairs as we come through what we're currently doing. And then we're making a chart. All right, we got this, we got this, we're doing this well. This is where we have holes. This is where we need to go look for resources.
Okay. Thank you.
So was there any discussion at state level or with your P Ds or, or any of the curriculum that covers other groups that were not covered by this legislation? To the point where we don't have. Size of our population that are saying, what about me, our age population, our age, like all this, this other subsets. Is there anything in it that kind of, you know, hits on any of that at all?
Not as far as regulations go.
Right. But I'm just saying in terms of the curriculum that we settled on, we're going to.
Oh, yes, one hundred, one hundred percent. When we use a rubric, when we come through, I'll use our. E L A that we did in secondary. We included every last E L A teacher in the, into the, into the committee. And we used something I presented on, it was like the night before the pandemic broke out. Ed reports where they come through, they're an independent organization, everybody uses them at this point. But they'll come through and they'll say, yeah, standards line, it's not aligned. And within the rubric that they use is a multicultural section of it and they'll score it there. So not just looking at necessary, necessarily the like history part of it or anything like that. But to make sure all cultures are represented within there.
Those populations are much lower than the population we're attending here, but they're still there. Yeah. So I would say have them feel slighted in any way during this process.
Absolutely. And then the, the wonderful P D that the two ladies put on today. We actually had, it was, it was a Ted Talk, it was an Asian lady on there speaking from that perspective. So, and in our survey results, we got some of that too. As we're reading through, we haven't been able to read all like three hundred fifty responses. But you know, that is, that is a question that's out there. Okay, we're doing this, but what about me? Am I going to be reflected in this too? So something we'll have to be cognizant of is because we keep moving forward.
And that's what the cultural response in like education. It's putting all those perspectives and representations.
Mr. McCloskey.
And the things with the state report, because you said the state's going to have check-ins or report like. But is that, you don't know what that's supposed to like either. So it's going to, or do you, is it a percentage of, of so much? Or is it, we just don't know yet.
So we've got a little draft of what the audit's going to look like. So basically it has this component that shoots you next to the tree and it'll have each grade level and it'll say where you at. But I see these for that.
But they're not putting in a percentage of time or, because I was just wondering how, because if you're already doing some of it, then, then great. You're still going to implement, that's fine, but it's, it seems. Not that it's something hard to track, but it's just kind of a little bit, like I said, the curriculum within the curriculum is kind of a. Thing to navigate and with it being presented as it's supposed to start this next year, it seems. It seems like the guidance is going to be with the other things I've done with the state, like make it official and you go. And that's kind of. Hard for, for planning, so.
Yeah, I think that's why we kind of created the team that created this sort of five-year phases because we still have a lot.
Yeah.
We have a lot to learn, a lot. This, this year's going to really be a lot of preparation time, developing of standards so that we can start with implementation.
And is that with the state of the day, is it, is it a phase in within so much time or?
But I will say this, that the state has promised resources and it appears that they're following through upon that promise. Because they're only starting at two, two grade levels.
Yes.
And two grade levels at once. So. One has to realize that this is, it, it's important work, it's work worth doing, but it is a heavy lift. It's going to take time. If you're going to do something like this and do it well, it's not an overnight snap of the fingers kind of thing.
I think that's my thing with it is I like, there's nothing. There's nothing wrong with any of this. It's just that it just seems like so quick. And, and I like to have things like, okay, here's a plan, here's this, this is when we're going to have these resources to you. And so like to feel, I'm sure like you guys do, like it's going to be just given to you as we go, that's got to be. So, thanks.
Do you feel like the counterparts or your counterpart in the other districts, like is there a team there that you. Rely on and work together on this where we're not all creating separate resources, but. Able to share what we're, what we're doing and get stuff from other districts.
So we talked about that. We actually had a first meeting in the beginning of May. It was all the districts were represented and kind of talked about sharing the resources. And then the equity supervisors, mine is equity and some other stuff. But equity supervisors meet on a monthly basis to kind of talk about where everybody is. Everybody right now is kind of in the same place where we're looking at our current curriculums and providing the resources. So one thing I did say at one of our meetings is we are a small state, so we should be able to share. And that's something that we're talking about. So that's why they're beginning to come up with that resource list.
Well, the other thing is we're really committed to making sure our staff is prepared.
Yeah.
Because it's, I mean, they have to know.
Yes.
What, what the expectations are because we can't expect that they're going to be able to do anything if we don't prepare them fully. So that's, we're committed to making sure our staff knows what they're going to have to do. So definitely appreciate the, the update this evening. Appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I know this, this can be somewhat of a politically charged topic. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that this is bigger than Lake Forest. This is something that was mandated to us and certainly recognize that you all were handed this. To figure out how to get it done. And certainly appreciate the fact in being responsive and getting it done in the most effective and, and appropriate manner. Also appreciate you hearing me repeating the one bullet point because I know certainly we hear it at times in our position. The, the misconception about what this absolutely is. And with that said, I would, I would certainly ask us to never use the culturally responsive teaching by its acronym. Because that was just really throw people off. Thank you all very much. Roll to three point four L F B A report, Mr. Ben Black, welcome, Mr. Black.
Hi, good evening. So as you know, the end of Twitter is coming. The Paris ended today and the most, the rest of the staff finishes tomorrow. I prefer our makeups and we're all just frankly, we're tired, we're very glad this year has come. So most people will be busy doing various things, some will be writing curriculum, doing other work. Some people will be working a second job, some people will just. Be going on vacation and doing whatever it takes to get themselves a break and we certainly encourage that, they need it. And on top of the, finally, the other thing I want to do is just also express L F B A's appreciation of Mr. Thomas and his time on the board over the last five years. And his willingness along with the rest of the board to work with L F B A to. For the betterment of the students and the staff experience here in the district.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Black. Welcome to Spoke Check as well. We appreciate everything you guys go and wish you a very enjoyable summer. All right, on to section four unfinished business, four point one, board policy, second reading, Mr. Brown. I'm going to floor properly second. Straight to some discussion and quickly review each of these policies before. Start with. A D C, which is also G D E D, back to free workplace. Discussion on. A D C. Just one thing I could ask if it's, so we talked about this with the. Student code of conduct because it does live online anywhere that we can make hyperlinks. I don't know if maybe starting into the new school year when we're reviewing policies, anywhere that we could build those into the policies as well. For example, this one that references Delaware code title sixteen, section twenty-nine and three. I don't know if there's a way we can start building hyperlinks there so that. We could link straight there like we do from the code of conduct for those things. Not asking for it here, if we agree that the best practice, we could start with that in the new school. And then in three years, we will cycle through all the policies. Right. Anything further on this one? All right, moving on to E B, environmental and safety program. Discussion on E B. So now move on to E E, transportation services. Discussion on E E. So now we're going to E E A E, a safety program. A discussion on this policy. I had one thing, number one, I think the red there was a change from first reading. And I think we can. Yeah, yeah, but safety program. So I think that second line where it should say need all Delaware state requirements comma. Such as the approval of bus drivers, I think we struck too much. So it should be requirements comma, such as the approval of bus drivers, standard for buses, et cetera. Discussion on that or anything. We want to E E A A, bus driver requirements, training and responsibilities. Discussion on this policy. So now on to E E A I, student transportation records and reports. Discussion on this policy. So now we're going to E I, insurance. So now we're going to EIA, insurance management. Discussion on EIA. So now we're going to GCC, staff leaves and absences. Discussion on this policy. So now moving into GCO. Evaluation of certified staff. Discussion on GCO. So now we move on to IKN, grading slash evaluation of students. Discussion on this policy, Mr. Brown.
So last page, great point average, we are striking or. So we struck with each check-in, the course having that point of three to five. What would have been happening, of course?
That's why it struck, it hasn't been offered in years.
That's what I was, well, actually, that's one of the things that's kind of buried in there, and I missed it, and I saw it with the lineup, I couldn't. Because my follow-up question would have been if there's something identified. With it being stricken now, is that going to have a retroactive effect on an institute that would have had a weak period?
No, it's been over four years.
That's, I could, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on IKN? All right, moving on, IKN, promotion, retention, and acceleration of students. Any discussion on this policy? So now, moving to our final one, JJJ, extracurricular activity eligibility. Discussion on Triple J. All right, so now that closes discussion on, obviously, unless anyone has anything else. See none, we have a motion on the floor properly seconded, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Four point two, Student Code of Conduct for the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three school year. This is action item, Mr. Brown.
Missionary approved resolution, four point two, Student Code of Conduct, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, school year, after a second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See no move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
That's one thing, Mr. Well and everyone that worked on that, a lot of work went into that, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Was that four to zero?
I'm sorry, five to zero.
All right, so four point three is listed as an action item, however, we do believe we still need to have a fair amount of discussion in this topic. So, Mr. Coleman, I know from our previous meeting. Board asked for a couple pieces of information, one was. More fine-tuned or exact cost of what this would entail, as well as, given we have one month left of the fiscal year. Where you projected us ending up budgetary wise. So if you could share those two pieces of information, any other discussion that you may have? Well, we finished with a district reserve, a local reserve of three point three eight million this past fiscal year. And so looking at where we are projected right now, knowing that we have expenses and revenues coming in. My best guess is that we would probably finish with a, a local district reserve at about three point eight million. At the conclusion of this fiscal year. So, three point four roughly up to three point eight, the increase of about four hundred thousand. Okay. And. Paying out the twenty-seventh pay. So understanding is it's really the ten-month employees that we're talking about. What is that, what, what will that cost be? So for one pay period, the local outlay for local pay. As I mentioned previously, is, is around typically, in a typical month, three hundred and seventy to three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but there's usually. Sometimes overtime in there for custodians, there's. Eper pay, there's coaching pay, there's, there's various other pays that are involved in those. And so when you simmer it down and just look at what's strictly gonna be an additional pay. Across the district. An additional local pay would cost the district with a two percent pay raise across the border next year, approximately three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. For the ten-month employees. That amount is about two hundred and forty-three thousand. And then the other hundred and ten thousand is the twelve, twelve-month employees. And so one of the reasons that we've talked about how this is impacting the ten-month employees first is due to that lag pay issue. And so, because when we start, July first will be the first pay, and it happens right on July first. So it's a Friday, and. It will hit, but it's for work that was completed in this current fiscal year, so that lag pay, and so the first two pays of July, the July first and the July fifteenth pay. Will both be for pay that was, work that was accomplished in the previous fiscal year, so there's that lag pay. So even though there is twenty-seven pays physically in this next fiscal year. The first two are from compensating employees for, you know, work that was accomplished in the previous fiscal year. And so when we look at the. The epilogue from the bill, it accurately says that. That twenty-seventh pay for ten-month employees will happen actually in FY twenty-four, but that if we were to take. The reduction for that twenty-seventh local pay, it would happen starting with the first pay in September for that, for this upcoming school. Now with twelve-month employees, that's a little different. Due to the lag pay, the estimation is that that twenty-seventh pay would not happen until. Beginning of fiscal year twenty-five, so it, so the, any kind of reduction would have to have, have to happen in fiscal year twenty-four or twenty-five. For that twenty-seventh pay for twelve-month employees due to lag. Now we will still have twenty-seven pays next fiscal year. And so whatever happens, we just have to budget for that, that's the big thing for next year. But from a budgetary standpoint, if we look at this, if, if the board was to move forward with the, with the change. That three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars increase. From what I just heard, if I understand, from a budgetary standpoint, two hundred and forty-three thousand of it for the ten-month employees would be budgeted in fiscal year twenty-three. And then a hundred and ten, and a hundred and ten would need to be budgeted in fiscal year twenty-four. So this increase really is gonna end up, would end up being spread out over two fiscal years.
Well, budgetarily, we will see it hit next year, because just because of there's physically twenty-seven pays in the year, so we don't have to budget for. The entire amount.
The entire.
But with the entire amount, I'm sorry. Well, the entire amount is the two forty-three, it's the three fifty some three. That includes twelve-month employees, but we don't have to do that, correct? We're only talking about the ten-month employees.
Well, if we're talking about a reduction, we only have to address that next year, yeah.
And I just want to make sure I understood, so. The state, the state is paying the twenty-seven pays.
Correct.
So. That starts, you said September, it'll start, will it show up this coming September?
For the twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Or for the, the ten-month employees, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, but there, that because they're getting that twenty-seventh pay, they will have a reduced pay. They're by a few dollars every month until they get that extra twenty-seventh pay.
Correct.
So it actually will look like they're getting less a paycheck. Because that twenty-seventh pay. Will then be like the extra that they would have got. Because they wouldn't have normally gotten it.
Correct, although the, the two percent increase is.
It all sets it.
It will, it will cancel out that reduction.
Right, so it won't, they won't see it, but then so the following year, they will really, they'll see more of the jump, because. That, though, actually, I'm gonna see like the extra two percent, because they won't have seen it because of the two percent increase.
Yeah.
For this year.
Correct. Additional questions or discussion?
Mr. Brown, I just, so again, it gets back to the point I made at the last meeting, if we do this, this, and what the state's doing, I'd say no. It's on top of what their contractual annual amount is, regardless of what we do, twenty-seven, fifty-four, pay them every day. At the end of the year, if we do nothing, they're still gonna get the same amount, correct? It's just broken out of an extra pay because of an extra.
True.
Of a fiscal period.
Now, some would say it's, it's easy, easier to argue that it's a bonus for the ten-month, because they work one hundred and eighty-eight days and we're now giving them an extra payment. With the, the twelve months, it's a little harder to digest. Only because of the fact that, no, what I'm saying is if we do not, so, yeah, so, yeah, so if we do this, there is still.
Correct. But if we do nothing. They're getting their full pay, it's just broken out over an additional pay period.
Correct, you're saying if you don't vote on it tonight?
If we, if, if, correct, if we, because it sounds to me like the question that we're being asked is, the state's gonna do their, the state has agreed to do the seventy percent state portion. Our question is, do we want to match thirty percent local portion and do this? That's, that's the ultimate question, correct?
Correct.
So then in that scenario, it's a bonus from the district. Because we are under no obligation to do so.
Yeah.
And it's, and if we don't, no one is being hurt by the decision that we're not making.
I don't know.
And they're getting the bonus technically, because the state is still, the state is still getting the twenty-seventh pay.
That's a true statement.
It's not just gonna be straight, candid and straightforward here, it's just, we're, we just discussed raising tax rates and potentially having a downfall. With potential legislation where we've got full money from the local budget, so the hard part for me, as trying to be a fiscal manager of the district's money. Is not saying that I don't think that our teachers deserve, and our staff deserves every single penny, and I would give them what we could. But we just were raising taxes to then do something that's a bonus, so what is the public perception of that? That, those are the kind of questions I have to answer when I walk out the store, and someone that's listening says, why didn't you make that vote, you just raised my taxes, and now you gave that money you didn't have to do, bonus, we just pledged. Those are the kind of things that, that I think about with these kind of topics.
And so I, I certainly concur, Mr. Brown, it's something we have to take into account. Where I have been from the beginning of this is, you know, certainly looking at where we are this year. Where we project to end up, and. Do we have the capability of doing so? And I believe we do, and I, I would be. I would be willing to answer those tough questions from constituents. Moving forward.
So to this point, then that goes back to the question I asked when we raised the tax rates, that if we had a shortfall, where would the money come from, that we had to cover that, and it was a local problem. So essentially we raised the local taxes to then pass it on here.
But I see that as being short-term, so if, if it's essentially, if we had that shortfall. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coleman, but if we had that shortfall, we would have then adjust to recruit that next year. But it would not be a permanent loss out of local.
By raising taxes.
By, by raising that tuition, that's my point, that tuition tax. I, I, I know, I know it's a difficult conversation to have with, with the, the general public about how the district is funded and where the different buckets come from and what they can only be used for these things. But. It's a conversation that if it comes up, has to be had, I, I don't look at one having to necessarily do with the other.
And you say we still have a surplus going into it, I mean, we still are adding on to.
Correct. We're projected to add on, and even if this money came out, we would still. Add a small amount. Knowing that this is a projection with another month of expenses to add.
What fiscal year did we do the last one, with the teachers and staff, was that this fiscal year?
That was the very beginning of this fiscal year, I believe, or was it the very end of last fiscal year? Or we paid a stipend? So we had, we had.
You said that it was coming out of the July, one of the July paychecks last year.
So I think we had, we, we had two in a row, I believe, right, we had one that was negotiated with the LFDA. And then we had one that was done by the board.
Correct.
Unprompted, that one was, what did you say, very beginning of July, one of the pay periods in July?
Correct. Total of that figure. I'm sorry, see, I have a rough idea of what the total of that thing was. You remember?
The total impact?
The total, dollar now. I want to say that was around a hundred and seventy.
Negotiate with just the one hundred and fourth.
Yeah, I want to say that was around a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty thousand total impact.
Further discussion or faults from the board?
I see a bit, we, let's see, Mr. Brown saying, but when he comes down to it, I think that's staff and our teachers are perfect. We should have to make sure for that we can sustain it.
So pleasure the board. So I, I would. I would be willing to go out here and to make a motion that we accept four point three. As written, the resolve Lake Forest Board of Education to distribute payroll from twenty-seven pay period, that's by twenty twenty-three, as, as we've discussed. Second from Mr. Thomas. Any further discussion or thoughts on this topic? Here now, we'll move to a favor, all in favor, we'll move to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section nine, personnel, make a motion for a resolution, nine point one through nine point one zero, as a second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See no move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section twelve, personnel transfers, and the commission approved resolutions, twelve point one through twelve point three, as a second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See no move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section thirteen, personnel rehires, and the commission approved resolutions, thirteen one through thirteen point nine, as a second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that? We'll just say again that I think. All of these are debt-related, is that, am I reading that correctly? So this is that time of year that. We do based on funding, knowing for the next fiscal year that we do. Team is rehired. Just carrying over from one year to another. Any further discussion on the topic? See no move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Excuse me, section fourteen, personnel offers employment, and the commission approved resolutions, fourteen one, fourteen one six, as a second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See no move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Staying with section fourteen, personnel offers of employment, and the commission approved resolution, fourteen point one seven, as a.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See no move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero with one of stitch.
Section sixteen, personnel leaves.
Section sixteen personnel leaves of assets and make a mission we approve resolution sixteen point one through sixteen point three as a second. A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Just reiterate, or there's executive content there for each of those if you have not reviewed. See, no additional discussion, we move to a vote, all those in favor. All those opposed?
No.
No. Extensions. Motion fails zero to five.
Staying with section sixteen personnel leave of assets and make a mission we approve resolution sixteen point four, sixteen point five, and sixteen point six as a second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussions on that motion? See, no move to vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Section eighteen personnel terminations and make a motion to approve resolution eighteen point one as written, second. A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See, not only to a vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed? The extensions, which she carries five to zero.
The commission will approve resolution nineteen point one under the section nineteen personnel administrative contract contract renewal for Randy and Short as a second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? And I will say again, related to deck, this is cleaning up one of the most awkward things we have to do over years of work and didn't know. And this is Short's contract in December, but now that the funding is secured. Should be a different outcome, so. Further discussion, see, no move to vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Extentions, motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty personnel appointments and make a mission to approve resolution twenty point one and twenty point two as written, second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that? See, no move to a vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed? The extensions, so she carries five.
Section twenty two other business, I make a motion we approve resolution twenty two point one school choice as written, second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See, none, move to a vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed? And extensions. Which are inspired.
Section twenty four other business financial reports and make a motion we approve resolution twenty four point one financial report as presented, see. Second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See, no move to a vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero.
And staying with section twenty four other business financial reports and the commission will approve resolution twenty four point two post tax rates fiscal year twenty twenty three as written, second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See, no move to a vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Ralph, thank you, Mr. Thomas, we're on the section twenty six quarter report discussion, other items, twenty six point one dollars school board association. This is start.
On that last night, last DSBA meeting of this year, so it was not many people there last night with all the graduation festivities. But we did have enough for a forum and we did vote on the slate of officers for DSBAs. So Ralph Ackerman, the main president, Jan Samwell, first vice president, Jason Castford, second vice president, David Toll, treasurer and legislative committee chair. So, none of those changed, by the way, so. Not many people vying for those positions, so they, we voted them back in. Yeah. They're still, they're still there, so a couple other things coming up. The new board member boot camp is coming up, but that's not just for the board members, so it's a, anybody needs like a. New little, a little tutoring in it, I'm thinking about going, it's been a couple of years and like we were talking about last night. You can hear all that stuff before you start, but you don't have any context to, to apply to it. I did talk to Dr. Wyatt and she's going, so I think I'm good going with her as well, so, but that is July sixteenth, it's a Saturday from nine to four, if anyone else is interested in going. And then finally, the, I guess it'll be the first meeting of next year is at Dr. Mary Nogies' house on August thirteenth as a picnic from one to four. If anybody's planning on going to RSVP, let him know if you're planning to attend and that is a plus one if you want to.
It's actually, by this, it's the international.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you, the starting questions for us to start you with DSB.
Twenty six point two legislative committee, Mr. Ralph.
Yeah, so let's wait till we met on June first. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, I was here with my senior daughter at senior awards night, minutes are attached. And that is the last meeting for us until. Meeting at the international headquarters in August and then back starting up next year.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ralph, any questions or discussion for Mr. Ralph? All right, one to twenty six point three, ECAP policy council, this is starting.
Yeah, Jordan, yeah.
Mrs. McCloskey.
Yes, I attended via Zoom because they let me know that they were not going to have a forum and they did not have enough parents come. That was on May nineteenth, they basically, we just talked about the end of the year. How all of the different sites were handling that, that they were summer bags, calendar, activities, safety, safety and health package, providing some water, sunscreen, bug sprays for the kids and. Yeah, that's okay, it was, it was nice to be able to at least see them on the news.
Thank you, any questions? Mrs. McCloskey. All right, twenty six point four, bit of the order, opportunity for board members to address any items not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Floor is open.
As for a re, 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 excuse me, the enjoyment that I had working with Mr. Thomas on board, I've known Mr. Thomas for a long time, way prior to this board, but I had an opportunity to. Spend the past five years in this, in this realm, so going to miss you on this area, but Cheryl, Steve and I go down the green. Just taking, I have a heavy foot.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph. Uh, just a couple of things to add, graduation was a great success, beautiful weather. Dr. Lewis mentioned tremendous work by all the staff administration of all for just an outstanding send off for our class of twenty twenty two. As well, congratulations all of our students and staff for making it through our final COVID ravaged school year. Wish you all very safe and fun summer break and we'll see you all back next fall for the start of our normal school year, first normal school year in a few years. As I mentioned, this is our final board meeting for this school year, board will meet again next projected Thursday, or we'll meet next July seventh for our annual reorganization meeting. At which time we will swear in our new board member, Dr. Betty Ann Wyatt. While the board's scheduled for next school year will also be decided that night, I do anticipate the board will reconvene for its first public meeting for that school year, Tuesday, August eleventh. And once again, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Phil Thomas as well for his time and the board's enjoyed the five years we've been in, can't believe it's been five years, but. Where does the time go, but certainly wish you all the best, stay safe, stay healthy out there. Anyone, anything else?
Last thing, it's going to be weird starting after a little bit of this year.
Yeah. I hope everyone has a great summer and I think we do not have a need for executive session, I believe, we do not. So I believe we will allow Mr. Thomas to make our final motion for adjournment.
Second.
A motion on the floor properly seconded for adjournment, any questions or discussion on that motion? So no move to vote, all those in favor.
I.
Any opposed, extensions, motion carries, or stand adjourned exactly nine P M. Great summer, stay safe.